I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome.
Recording in progress.
The recording's in progress. March 18th, 2025. This is the Select Board in the Town of Lee. And I'll start off by announcing that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of this meeting. So if you wish to not be videoed or not be audiod, this would be the time to leave the room. Thank you. All right. Our first order of business is to look at and discuss the minutes of our open session meeting of March 4th, 2025. Let's see. Let's see, minutes. I've looked them over. I didn't see anything outstanding or any issues that I wanted to bring to the attention of you, but how about you guys?
Well, Mr. Chair, I move we accept the minutes of March 4th, 2025.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second.
All right. And seeing no one has anything to change, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It is unanimous. All right. We are now at item number two, which is public comment, general public comment. Anyone here? Where's our infamous Kathy?
Actually, as it happens, Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a public comment from Kathy to make.
Very good.
She couldn't make it here tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
And she asked me to announce that they're looking, the Lee Youth Commission's looking for volunteers to take down the ice rink. As I'm sure it's very melted at this point.
I would think so.
They are gonna do it Saturday, March 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. And obviously, the rink is at the athletic field. Everybody wasn't.
All right. Very good.
Anybody that wants to help?
Okay. So it's Saturday, the 22nd, at 9:00. Is that it?
That's all I have.
All right. Very good. Thank you. No one else? If no one else is here, then we're gonna move on to our general business. And we will start with our first order of general business, which is Historical Commission. Discussion of a demolition bylaw. Come up and introduce yourself to everyone at home, and we'll go from there.
Hi. Thank you for speaking.
Hi.
My name is Susan Stone. I'm in the Historical Commission. And Bill Matthews is gonna, is here with me to discuss this. I think I brought this topic to you months ago, and in the Master Plan Program, in that publication H113 designates, or states that they wish to, they hope that we will pursue a demolition delay for the purposes of protection and preservation of historical properties of historical significance. In doing this, I presented you with the bylaw. We hope to get it on the warrant at the public, at the town meeting this fall. And I'm very hopeful that you guys will support it. The intent, as I wanted to say, is to preserve and protect, but it's not to prevent demolition. The idea being that if a property comes, or a building, a barn, whatever, comes up for demolition, that the building inspector inform the Historical Commission so that we may see one, whether it's been inventoried, and if it does have any significant historical, any historical significance. What we are asking for is buildings that are older than 100 years old. Many of the other delay bylaws go for 50, but we thought maybe 100 was more reasonable. If we, if we receive this, we have seven days, or the demolition request comes to the building inspector, that he has seven days to let us know, and we have 15 days to respond as to whether we want to pursue a historical significance. If we feel that it is significant and should be preserved, we have to have a public meeting within 30 days. It's not used often, but it is something we should have on the books in case a developer comes, or some building is in danger of disappearing. Recently, within the last five years, a building from Main Street disappeared without our knowing anything about it, and it was on our inventory. And it was kind of upsetting to just see it gone.
Sure.
So this is a way of preventing that. If the building is not in our inventory, then we have an opportunity to look at its historical significance and to document its existence. So that is the intent, and as I say, we are looking for your support on that. We've also, there are two optional things. One is the age of the building, the other is the length of the delay. Some, at the last page on what I handed you, some areas have gone to, they're six months, 12 months, 18 months. Stockbridge has an endless delay. There was recently an article in Richmond bemoaning the fact that they did not have this and lost a couple of barns that they were concerned about. So we've chosen 100 years, and we have chosen a delay of 18 months in which the person who's wanting to demolish has the opportunity to find alternative repurposing or whatever, if, if in fact we impose.
Or buyers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. In fact, if we were to impose a delay. I'm here to answer questions, comments, get your input. Do you think 100 years is reasonable as the age of the building? Do you think 18 months is reasonable? Is it something you guys could support? You don't have to tell me right now, but we're gonna also go to the planning board because they're part of this whole process.
Sure. So we'll open up for questions? Anybody wanna start with questions first from the board member? Oh, Bill, did you wanna speak first?
I just had a very brief set of comments, more or less along the lines of what Susan has been saying, that our purpose is not to add bureaucracy or cost to people's intent, but especially it is to preserve the public-facing facades of buildings that are historic in keeping with the neighborhood that they are in. And we think that that's a very important thing to pursue, in spite of the fact that some of these, these buildings may be in some disrepair. We certainly recognize that the repairs can, can be made either in a consistent way or not, and that the Berkshire County emphasis on tourism really demands that we keep in mind the fact that the historic nature of the town contributes to that, that characteristic as well.
And within that bylaw, there is, there is a part of, that demolishing also includes radically changing the, altering the edifice that appears on the street.
Is that it, Bill? I don't wanna interrupt you.
Right. And I just would emphasize again that it's only if it's a historic building to be damaged.
Over 100, or at least 100 years old. Okay. So I'll open it up to the board for any questions first. Either one of you.
Mr. Chair, so let me go on the record. First of all, saying I'm absolutely all for preservation of historic buildings. They're important to, to our town, not only for the tourism, but just to historic preservation, the character of the town. When people think of Lee, they think of the Main Street, you know, the brick buildings. You know, we have an image of our town, and it can, towns don't change overnight, they change incrementally. And so I'm, I'm all for this, but I'm gonna play the devil's advocate and say, how, if you have the Historic Commission, what is the, how is the criteria spelled out? Because you're gonna, you may get pushback. I can speak from experience, I lived in Great Barrington for a while. You may get pushback from private property owners saying, here's another level of bureaucracy. Now you're telling me what I can do with my property. Okay? You're gonna change the, you're gonna have to, you're gonna tell me what kind of roof I can put on it, because that will change the, look at, how is, how is that, how is the criteria spelled out?
We actually are pretty open on that, or pretty lenient on, they come to us about, you know, colors and all that stuff. In a, in our function, we cannot really dictate that sort of regulation, you know, what kind of roof you put on. We, I know, in the local historic district, which is Main Street, the lower Main Street, we do have some say about how radically, you can't change the street appearance of a building. But I, I know that in South Lee, they've asked to make some changes in solar panels and stuff like that, and that would fit within the Mass Preservation Guidelines. It's not, it's, as I say, it's not to prevent, it's to protect. And it's, we're making a committee of three right now. Love to have more. But I don't know how quite to answer your question.
I just, I'm just, I think, I'm just speculating.
Right.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get pushback. We're gonna get pushback from private property owners who say, if I wanna sell my property, they can tear it down, or they can put up whatever they want, you know? It's got nothing to do with me, but you may.
No, it's a Mass Law. But you can't do that without, if it's a stor, if it's deemed to be of historical significance. Now, when I say, no, you can't do that, I'm sure if you went to the Mass.
Historical Commission.
Right to the, the Home Office, the Mass Historical, they would take it under review if we, if we thought that it was a problem, if they wanted to take issue with our having said no. I can't imagine, really.
We need the whole House, all of the states.
Nothing, why don't you silence, mute everybody? Sure. Thank you. So, Bob, anything more before we go over to Sean?
Just, this is gonna go to town meeting anyway.
Yeah, so we have to go to town meeting.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Sean, any questions?
Yeah. How do you, cause I just got this, I didn't get a chance to, what's the criteria again?
It's 100 years old or more. It is either architecturally significant, it's, a person who lived there had a history.
Sure.
Part of our, part of Berkshire County history, you know, the lawyer, the judge, the general, whatever. If they, if that, if that is significant to the Town of Lee. The other thing is that if we decide that it is of a historical significance, we have to do a public meeting within 30, a public hearing in 30 days, within 30 days of our.
So it's not, it's not every structure that's over 100 years old?
Absolutely not.
And you, and the Historical Commission weighs in on whether or not they deem it of historical value for X, Y, and Z?
Right. And then we have a public meeting within 30 days of having determined that.
And what's the, what happens in the public meeting? Cause I'm, I'm kind of curious if we, if, if there's like, you know, when we have a special permit or something, there's like five findings that we need to do, or there, you know, I'm wondering sort of the process of how you are gonna go ahead and, you know, deem the historical significance, or is it just, you know, could it just be that, oh, it's, it's, it has aesthetic value, and it's 100 years old, so we're deeming it? Is it that simple, that you can just, you know, the Historical Commission can just go ahead and say that? And you see, you kinda understand what I'm.
As a rule, it would have to have some qualities about it in terms of its architecture, or again, the, the people who inhabited that building that would make it historic.
Yeah. And I guess my, that's, and I'm just, I'm just posing the question, but my, my question is sort of how, how, what's the process of the public meeting to deem it of historical value?
If we were, if it was really serious, and we were having a public hearing, I might have somebody who knew more about that building and that issue be there at the pub to defend our decision. Somebody professional. Yeah.
No, just as another, maybe another way of saying, do you foresee like having, for lack of a better word, findings? You know, it's architecturally significant because of this, this, and this.
Yeah.
Historically significant.
Yeah.
It would have to be a specific.
There would have to be findings.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, and then I'm also curious about the, so the delay, you would put on the structure, and then what would you be seeking? I, you kind of mentioned it, but maybe you could go into a little more detail.
So the, the building inspector would not be able to, would not issue a permit. We would help or get guidance for that person to maybe consider alternative uses, help him find people who might be interested. We're not gonna do it, but all, but we, we would help him.
So the Historical Commission wouldn't seek to acquire the, you know, like from the town, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be asked to like acquire this historical building cause it's, you know?
I shouldn't think so.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just.
You know, unless we could figure out a really good thing for the building.
It would be to sort of, it would be to sort of help the owner identify or, you know?
In, in Stockbridge, they were pretty successful in finding people who were willing to rehab these properties on their own. They've done about 10 in over like 10 years.
So you would imagine that it would really be a facilitation of, here's how, here's what we're, we would like you to maintain the historical significance, and here's some ideas, and here's some people that we can facilitate to achieve that? That's really the, the goal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No? No? So just so people at home understand what's happening and what your thoughts are, how would something like this have applied should this was in play, when the Eagle Mill development was gonna go on? You know, it is obviously more than 100 years old. So would there have been a role, or because it's not a demolition, it's a rehab, but yet they're dealing with some historically significant towers and all that?
That, I probably would have deferred right to the Mass Historical.
Okay. Which they did anyway.
Actually, yes, they asked us, and we replied that the, the four buildings that were along Center Street were not of historic significance, even though they were over 100 years old.
Those are the residences that got torn down?
That's right.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
And we continue to write letters of support to them for that.
And you get involved in also details like, I know if we had a historic district, there's a different set of rules for that, and you could get involved in window replacements and all kinds of things that'd be significant, or, you know, the same. Seen a lot of costs involved, and some people may be a little bit afraid of that. So is that within your purview at that point, or just not necessarily, you know, having to recreate, you know?
I think Mr. McMahonman went to the Mass Historic to get guidance on how that should occur, because it was part of the local, the lower. I wasn't here when he was doing that, but my understanding is he did get guidance and approval from the Mass Historic.
And just so people know, as part of this, so, because this, again, we just got this, there is, and in the law, by the way, the general law, there is an override for this, so people know that if in fact there is a demolition permit requested, and the building is of, so dilapidated and in such bad shape that it's gonna be in immediate public danger, then the building official does have the right to just say, I'm sorry, but they're gonna have it torn down.
Yes.
Other than that, I mean, I've seen this in action in other towns, where that did have to happen in one case, but in other cases where during the delay, they actually put it out for sale, or for renovation, or other ideas, they had public hearings to see, well, what should we do about this? And so, yeah, I'm not against it at all, but I'll do a little more reading since it just came in today on my, on our desk when we came down here. So, yeah, no, this is great, and I think you'll have your homework to do, you may wanna have your own public hearings, kind of have this go before the board. Is this like a plan where they have to report to the town meeting?
It needs to be approved at town meeting, but you guys are gonna need to approve the warrant with that on there.
Sure. And I get it, but are they, do you guys have a responsibility to have a public hearing about this bylaw?
It's a general bylaw.
It's a general bylaw. Okay. No, so you wouldn't have to do that. I just wanted to make sure our steps were clear.
Right. I am gonna go to the planning board as well.
Good. Great. Good. Any other questions? Chris, any questions?
I was gonna kinda ask what Sean asked, which was, you know, what happens during that 12 months, if my understanding is correct, the Historical Commission would kind of make recommendations on how it could be preserved or saved, but after that, 12 months is over, the, the owner would still have the option at that point to demolish it if they, if they couldn't find a good solution.
The, the building inspector can issue a permit.
Sure. I would assume you also have the right, or the ability to go to Mass Historic and try and get funds, or help the owner get funds to rehab or whatever? That would, you'd be one of the intermediaries in that, in that kind of a situation or not?
I'm not certain about that. I haven't seen that, that, that they actually, we actually pursue the funds, but I do know we go for resources.
Or you could assist them and give them guidance at the very least.
Through information.
Yes. Exactly. Okay. All right. That's good. Open to the public now. We have our planner here, we have other guests. Anybody have any other questions I'd like to ask? Leslie's online from the Edge, so anybody have any questions?
The planning board is meeting next Monday, and this is on their agenda for next Monday.
So next Monday's, if those who maybe not here, I don't know if they can hear you, but, so next Monday, you're in front of the planning board, so if somebody wants to come and know more about this, or see what kind of questions they want, and they record their meetings anyway, which is on our website, so, okay. Well, thank you very much for the discussion, and we'll see how it goes forward.
Thank you for having us.
Good luck. All right. No problem. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Okay. The next is item 3B. I think I have in front of here, an annual certificate, this is the liquor license one. So we have a, is this a late seasonal? And I'm wondering why it says seasonal, by the way? Because I think, that was one question.
We do this every year.
Seasonal, the beer in line isn't.
Oh, the liquor part seasonal. Okay. And what's the season, what's the timeframe of that season? All year?
April 1st to January 15th.
Okay. Say that again louder.
April 1st to January 15th.
Okay. Thank you. So that's why they're back? Okay. Very good. So is anyone here to speak to this particular issue? It is for Route 102 Package Store. No one's here to speak to it? Do you folks have any questions or comments that you wanna act on it? You wanna have somebody come in? I mean, I know it's something that's been done in the past.
Yeah, I think we do it on a yearly basis.
Very great.
Straightforward.
Yeah. It looks like they've paid their fee.
Yep. Yeah, it looks like I have a copy of the check here.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the renewal of seasonal package store license for the Route 102 Package Store.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments before we go forward? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous. We'll let them know, and we'll sign off. I assume I have to sign something for the whole board?
You all have to sign that.
We all do? Okay. We'll all sign. Next is a common victualer application, El Patron. Do we have, right now it says it's for 17 prime outlets, up at the prime outlet, and they want to move into a space up there in the outlet village. So if someone would like to come forward, introduce yourself, we'll be happy to talk to you.
Hi, my name is Laurentino Francisco, and we're planning to open food court.
Okay. Very good. And is there a particular food type, or what kind of?
Yes, it is Mexican food.
Mexican food? Very good. Thank you. Okay. And I assume you've had years of experience?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you just let us know what that kind of experience is?
Yes. I've been, I worked half of my life in restaurants. I work at Bissin in Great Barrington, the brewery, and a few years ago, I owned my own business in, in Great Barrington, Donahue.
Okay.
And I lost it because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
But I wanna come back to.
You're not alone in that.
No, no.
You're not alone in that. So, okay. Very good. And I assume square footage and all that all is taken care of by the space that you're renting from them?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on this?
No. Yeah. They're not serving alcohol.
No, right, right. It's just a common victory license.
Yeah.
All right. All right. No questions? Any questions from out there? Seeing, I see you have support, no questions, but you have support, so that's good. That's a good thing. Okay. Very good. Well, then, as far as the action goes, would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the common victory license for El Patron.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All right. Seeing no other questions, then I would call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best up there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Sure. All right. Our next, next order of business is the Lee Chamber. I believe, am I in the right one? 3D. Yep. Okay. Lee Chamber Commerce is looking for a temporary sign permit, and this is, I do have a question about this. I don't know how far we can stretch and vary from our bylaws all the time. They want four lawn signs around town, that shouldn't be a problem on public land, from March 22nd to April 5th. Oh, no, this isn't the one I have a question on. This is fine. Lee Restaurant Week, I guess we're having a restaurant week from March 30th to April 5th, and they would like to place them around town, and they're asking for a fee waiver, I believe. Anyway, any thoughts? It's, it's a small sign, it's only 18 and a half inches tall, and 27 and a half inches long, so they're not big signs.
Four of them?
Yep. And they want four of them around town, so, you know, it'll be interesting to see what else, what other advertising and whatnot is out there, and so we all know what's up with that. Do we get discounts? Is just, are they gonna be outside? I assume they're inside. From March 30th to the 5th, I assume they're, they're trying to bring people into town, and, and what's gonna bring them? Just, just advertising, I guess. So that's something the Chamber will be, I'm sure, advertising in papers and whatnot, so we'll read about it when everybody else does.
Yeah, I think it was in there, they did start to mention in the newsletter, there's gonna be specials and like some prefix.
Great.
You know, three course meals.
I figured it had to be something like that. They're gonna do some kind of special deals. So that's great, and thank the restaurants for participating also. That's great. So, anyway, what's, any other questions or comments or?
No, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the temporary sign permit for Lee Chamber of Commerce and waive the fee.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous, and the fee is waived. The next we have, 3E, we have another temporary sign permit application from the Kuanis this time. This is, let's see, freestanding sign, 23 and a half inches by 12 foot eight, or 12, well, this is my question. Is it 23 and a half inches and 12.8 inches? I don't see any footmarks, although, I can't tell what kind of is.
It does say.
The description, is it, is it, yeah, the 23.5, is that feet? Or is that just that it's outside the box, or the other stroke is in the box? I can't tell.
I think the other stroke is in the box, and I would, if we move and approve this, I would say we should put a condition that that is actually inches.[1721.15] I would say we should put a condition that that is actually inches.
Yeah, 23.5 inches. Well, that was my concern, because it's way over our sign limits if we're going to do that.
The two marks to be in.
Yeah, see, one of the marks is, I think, yeah.
Those are decimal points.
Yeah, right. So anyway, so yes, as long as the motion includes that it's 23.5 inches by 12 foot 8 inches, and if it's different from that, they better get back in here. Although, it's not till October, so they're asking really early, which is great.
Getting ahead of it.
Exploration on Halloween, October 31st. Given that you're going to make that specific, you know, to the motion. And they also want to put some pink ribbon yard signs and some stuff. So it's I don't see it. I don't see a problem with this. You know, they're trying to make it a special event in town. It's called a Paint the Town Pink fundraiser. So there'll be signs there around the park on the fence, and that's what made me a little nervous that it might be 23 and a half feet. So let's let's get that under control right away. And on ribbons on the light posts, I don't have a problem with that. You're going to get pink lights now too, Chris?
As close as we can get.
Oh, we can't. We'll have to put some kind of shielding on it to make it look like that.
Red, green, blue.
White cover.
And yellow, I think.
Can you do white? I'm just wondering.
The rest are all white.
I know that, but to the little ones, I just didn't know.
We can shut them off, but.
That would be an idea. It's not for the summer. Anyway, okay, well, back to this. I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the temporary sign permit for the Kiwanis Club of Lee and waive the fee with the condition that the sign is no more than 23 and a half inches by 12 and 12.8 inches large.
All right, do I have a second for that?
One second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would just say that if it actually is 23 and a half feet, maybe the Kiwanis could come in next time and talk to us about it. Maybe we could divide it. Got plenty of time. That's why I'm not concerned. But maybe what we do is break it into two or three different signs, you know, and give them a couple of different sign permits rather than one really big long one. I don't know, because that I think would be problematic for attaching it, making sure the wind doesn't blow it away and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, I have it marked that we voted, so I guess we're in good shape there. All right, 3F. Inter municipal, oh, sign the IMAs, right. So we have a couple of inter municipal agreements. The first one in my book right now is the Administrative Assistance Services. You have them in that order? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what this is, is an inter municipal agreement that basically we have a shared building department right now, and we've divided the inspectors into one inter municipal agreement, and then the administrative assistants into a separate agreement because of some issues where New Marlboro wants to join Great Barrington, Lee, and Lennox for the administrative support of the building departments. So that's the one we're looking at first.
And West Stockbridge is in that too.
Oh, because they're not on the.
I was going to say, no, I don't see them listed.
West Stockbridge is on the the building department, but it's not listed as.
Oh, mine's in a different order, sorry.
No, okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that that's why I asked if this was the right one first. So in this case, for administrative assistance, we're just looking at the town of Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, and New Marlboro. As part of this inter municipal agreement, there is a clause which would allow Stockbridge to join at some time in the future. And we could always revisit this if it also includes down the road, West Stockbridge or whatever.
And this is a three year term?
Three year term, renewable. It's also you can get out with X amount of days' notice. And it's basically because we have covered so many towns, we now need administrative assistance. And these administrative assistants, based on this, would be Lee employees. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the inspectors from the next one are will not be Stockbridge.
Right, and that's a different one. So rather than confuse us more than we are confused, we're going to stick with just the administrative assistants at the moment. So it will be Lee employees. They will be covering the inspectors in Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, and New Marlboro. So.
One is based in Lee, one is based in Great Barrington.
Correct, for physical addresses. But each town has to supply an area should we wish to have an administrative assistant go to another town for some reason, so that the shared space will be there. Anyway, I've read through this more than I wanted to, and I guess I would turn it over to you folks on this one issue first, to see what you'd like to do. And it looks like there's only a space for a chair, the chair of the board to sign, just to keep that in mind. So what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign on behalf of the town of Lee, the municipal agreement for shared building department administrative assistance services amongst the towns of Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, and Marlboro.
Okay, I have a motion? We have a second. Any questions? No one online has a question? No one here has a question? All right, then I would call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Now, for the second, we have another one. We're adjusting, we currently have an inter municipal agreement to share our building officials and zoning enforcement services among the towns of Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, and Stockbridge. And this adds West Stockbridge. So now we're adding another town to the inter municipal agreement. So therefore, the building officials themselves, while they will be inspecting buildings and doing zoning enforcement in those towns, they are actually going to be Stockbridge employees, but they will share the responsibilities in all the communities, and will pay a portion of the cost to Stockbridge, like we do with any inter municipal agreement, like Tri-Town Health and all those. Again, I don't have any questions. I've read it and talked with Chris about it. I think, again, it's just the chair that has to sign. Any questions from you folks or any clarifications you'd like to make?
None for me. Again, this is same term.
It is. Yeah.
It's been really successful, and, you know, other towns are interested in joining because it's worked out really well. So and it does actually help the budget a little. This would be the only department that's actually we're going to see a decrease on our budget because it's being split over more communities, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for that that information. So anyway, we have something here. I'm waiting for a motion if you'd like to.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the inter municipal agreement for shared inspection, inspectional and zoning enforcement services among the towns of Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, Stockbridge, and West Stockbridge, and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, last chance. Any questions, comments, adjustments you think need to be made? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, did you happen to reach out today and see if we're the first ones to sign off on this or not?
Yes, I did ask that. I believe we are.
Great, great. So this is going to go to the.
Stockbridge next.
Super. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help with this. Okay, we're on to the next agenda item, which is the signing of collective bargaining agreements. We can do this individually, or we can do it. We have we have been in collective bargaining with the police department, the fire, and the Department of Public Works. We've had a number of negotiation discussions, all in executive session, which has to happen. And we now have the three agreements in front of us. Would you like to do them all individually, or do we need to do them individually, or can we do them at once?
I think the motions should be individual.
That's fine.
Yeah, for each. But basically, they all kind of have the same theme to them. You know, they're all three year agreements for the three unions in town, police, fire, DPW. And the goal of these is they're just basically maintaining the consistent wages of, you know, the surrounding towns in the area.
Well, that's it. I will say you put in a lot of work making sure that that we aren't the very highest paid or the underpaid. So we're right right there with other towns around us. And I think this is I know we've had many discussions about it, and I think we've worked through some pretty good language here to protect the town and the cost, and also to help the officers and all these and workers in all these departments. I think it's worked out well. So I think first I would entertain a discussion and possible motion on the police department agreement.
Mr. Chair, just a question.
Yes.
Are all three of these available at town hall if the public wanted to?
Yeah, once we sign off.
Once we sign off on them, yeah. Okay, very good.
Well, I'm obviously, we've been working on this for a while. I'm I can make a motion if you.
Yes, it's fine.
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign off on the on the IMA for the Lee Police Association.
Okay. Do I have a second on the police?
I have a second. Bob said IMA, but I think this is is that.
This is just a collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, the IMA was the last one.
Okay, no, good catch. All right, collective bargaining agreement for police. We have a motion and a second. Any other last minute questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we will sign off on that. Next, let's discuss the fire, the fire department agreement with that union. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to sign off on the agreement between the town of Lee and the Lee Career Firefighters Local 5318.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve and sign off on the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Lee Firefighters Union.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second thought.
All right, again, I'll call if anyone has a question or comment. Seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And again, well done by everyone and very cooperative. I thought the employees from our part were reasonable and cooperative, and I think we have some good agreements here. So next, I would entertain some discussion about the let me get it. Where is it?
This is a DP, I think you're on DPW.
There it is. There's the main, yeah. Would they are DPW Union. They are part of the Teamsters, by the way. Any questions or comments?
This one is a little unique from the others in that the others have always had kind of a table of certifications and longevity.
Right.
The DPW Union never did. We've now added that.
Okay.
So that's consistent with the other unions now, where you get your pay rate is dependent on what certifications and licenses in one column and the other based on how many years you've worked there, so.
Okay, very good. I think it seemed like it made things a little more even for people who have been around longer and recognizing their service to the town as opposed to first year folks who, you know, we differentiated between those. All right, so having worked on this long enough, does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign off on the agreement with the Lee DPW.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this from anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. And we're not done yet with our agreements and whatnot. We also have a contract. It was time to renegotiate negotiate the contract with our police chief, DeSantis. And we have in front of us, again, the the new agreement, which we've gone over also a number of times. It seems to be agreeable to the chief. And I would ask for what your pleasure is with this.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agreement between Lee and the police chief. And is it just authorize Chris, the town administrator, to sign?
Very good. Thanks for catching that. Yep, it says right there. Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All right, any last minute comments? And I would just say, thanks, chief. You've done a heck of a job, and we appreciate you, the work you put in here.
This is the same similar timeframe, three year contract, right?
Yeah. All right, with that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous. Again, thanks, Chief DeSantis. All right, we are on to 3I. Discuss and potential signing of a letter in support of HCEC, which is.
Yeah, that's the Housing Consumer Education Center.
Thank you.
Program.
And this is, yes. So didn't we discuss this a little bit last time?
I think it came up.
I think we did. I know we got some emails, and we did talk about it.
I think we've supported it in the past.
Yes. I think we have. This is not the one where they're saying to support them forever, right? This is just for this one letter. I think they actually.
Governor's budget has cut the the HCEC funding, and that's what, actually, is it Eileen Pelkier? Yeah, she she's asking us to sign this letter of support to increase the budget for this program.
Put it back to what it was.
Put it back to what it is. The governor's budget reduces it from nine million to five roughly, and she's she's asking for support.
To put the budget back.
To put it back to nine.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And I think there's two letters here, but is it are they the same? I believe they're the same.
I think one's to the House and one's.
Yeah.
Yes, one's to the House and one's to the Senate. So I suppose we should make that part of our motion to sign both letters. So I would entertain a motion to to discuss this or put it off or to move it forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we sign the letter letters in support of the HCEC program to the House and the Senate.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right. So just clarification, this isn't to give them more and more money, it's to keep them at least level funded.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we are now down to 3I, which is, we do this every time we have an election or anything coming up. This is a letter from our town clerk, Rachel Armstrong, and it's actually asking us to allow the chief to designate and continue to designate staff at the polling locations for the police. And no vote would force the Board of Selectmen to make the staffing decisions. And I don't see any reason, I mean, he's been doing it for a while. He does a great job. He knows his own staffing. I don't want to get involved in in changing the way the staffing goes myself. That's my personal opinion. But I guess I would ask how you want to go forward on this.
I'm sorry.
That's right, staffing, the polling.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I.
The chief decide.
Right. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one at the polling location at every election there, and to preserve order and to protect election officers and supervisors from any interference with the duties to aid in enforcing the law relating to elections as required by Section 72 of Master on the Law, Chapter 54, which was changed in Section 13 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022. Furthermore, move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police Furthermore, move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location, date, and time said officer is needed. Said officer is needed.
There's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, thoughts? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. So, next, we have an opt-out of early voting. You want to explain this? I know we've done this before too, Chris.
Yeah, under the Votes Act, it's required if we don't opt out of it, that every, the clerk would have to mail every registered voter a card to say whether they want a vote by mail, and then we'd have to send those out. So, the estimated cost here is over $7,000 to do that process. And the thing is, anybody, if you can't make it, if you're homebound, or you're gonna be away, you can still request an absentee ballot.
Sure, exactly.
This would do like, this would require us to basically, what was done for a presidential election, where everybody gets a mass mail in the forties, you know, forty-seven hundred.
And this is just for the town?
For the town election. We have to do, but the state pays for it, and the other part, they send out the postcards, and they do the printing. We actually do have to pay the postage, but they'll reimburse us, but this would call the town, so.
Okay. All right, so, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to opt out of the early vote by mail in the 2025 town election.
Seeing, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right, no other comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, thank you. We move on, we had received some applications for some Berkshire gas work. The first is to replace an existing gas main on Canal Street. Now, let's see here. We have the information here, it's been signed off by the DPW and the police department. What's your pleasure on this one?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the Berkshire's gas permit to replace existing gas main on Canal Street and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments, given the information we have? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next, the gas permit is for some work to be done.
This is a gas abatement.
Yep, on 18 High Street, gas service installation slash abatement.
Abandonment.
Abandonment, jeez. I wrote a blue.
I know.
That's all right, don't worry about it. Hey, I should read better. Okay, so, 18 High Street, replacement off-road to the left side of the property, all right? What's your pleasure on this? We have a detail here, it's been signed off by DPW. It's not in the road, it looks like it's on the side of the road, looks like. So, what's your pleasure? Is it going in the road at all?
Yeah, well, they're bore, there's a note to attempt to bore.
To bore.
Top areas, even if there's a walkway, so.
Sure, okay, it sounds good. All right, so what would you like to do with this?
I'd make a motion that we approve the gas service installation slash abandonment at 18 High Street, and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, great, motion and a second, no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. The last one we have is a 19 Olive Street, let's see what that one says.
Same as the last one.
All right, so it's, again, this is a installation and abandonment another, so they have a service replacement at 19 Olive Street, off of Taylor Avenue is where they're coming. Again, it's been signed off by the DPW and the police department, and we have a nice little sketch here of what they're doing. And what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the gas service installation slash abandonment at 19 Olive Street and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, that's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next order of business is to sign a letter in support of extension, to extend the, and allow municipalities the ability to host remote and hybrid and in-person public hearings. So, this is ever since COVID, March 2021, May 2020. Actually, we have been allowed by the legislature to have these remote meetings, so someone could go online and watch us, talk to us, and participate from home. So, this is a letter, and I'm not gonna read the entire thing, but this is to Senator Mark, and we have one to Representative Davis. And it's basically asking for the flexibility to hold public meetings, and that it's crucial and meaningful to democracy and having our boards work all out there in public. And I'm sure this letter will be on our website at some point too, showing that we want to, I would assume, support this. So, what is your, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, my understanding is the legislature's gonna vote on this on Thursday.
Yes.
So, we get it to them right away, and there seems to be overwhelming support for it from other municipalities.
I think, I think there is, and I think not just from the administrative leadership, I think from the general public.
Yeah.
I think it's really added a lot. I know we've had a lot of people who are online at our public hearings, and sometimes just to come and voice their opinions, and I think that's great, that we get people to do this. Anyway, so, was that a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign a letter asking to extend the remote accessibility for meetings.
Because that's both the senator and the representative, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second? All right. I will, no one's here to really comment, so I will ask for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's just hope they do it. I wish they'd just make it permanent and stop doing this a little bit at a time frame.
Yeah.
I think it would be very helpful, so that's great. All right, thank you for that motion. All right, next, we had a warrant article petition to see if the town will vote to renegotiate the Rest of the River Agreement without the dump. I guess there's some problems, number one, this came in late. It came in after the deadline for having it on. I only see three signatures, there's more. There, yeah, no, I'm looking.
There's a few pages, yeah.
This is great, no, this is good. So, I, you want to explain that, we talked about this earlier, and there's a couple problems with the wording, I'm not saying that isn't something that could be reworded or revisited, but there is a problem with the language, and I'm not sure I can support it the way the language is written. Number one, it's to vote to renegotiate the Rest of the River Agreement without the dump, okay? We could vote to support this, we can put it on, and we could have a unanimous vote. The problem is, it really doesn't mean anything, because it's the Rest of the River Agreement, which is five towns. It's not just the Town of Lee, you know, it's five towns. I know that we are doing the best we can, and in part, by the lawsuit, the federal lawsuit that we filed, to possibly put us in a position to actually negotiate by ourselves, by ourselves, without getting the other five. I don't, personally, I don't want the other five towns involved, because this dumps in late. I'd rather just be our town involved. But I don't see with this language that it's a meaningful warrant article unless every one of the towns had this. And even still, the agreement is kind of a done deal.
Yeah.
It's a done deal, we've got the money, we've met all the requirements that was in there. GE has met the requirements in the Rest of the River Agreement. And I'm not saying that this is not a great thought, but I think that this way of going about this thought might not be anything that we can act on.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think the, and another issue I see is that if we could, if we really, even if we could renegotiate the Rest of the River Agreement, the agreement was put in place to inform the writing of the permit, so I don't think that changing the agreement would necessarily change the permit, because the permit has been issued and is in place.
Right, that's a good point.
And they're being acted on, and it's being acted on at this point, so.
Right.
I think that that also kind of is a problem, that where this wouldn't be very effective.
Right. So, I think, I think I'd like to go back and talk to the people, maybe have a meeting with these folks, one of us to actually say, look, it's a great idea, but unfortunately, it's kind of an action that won't get us anywhere. And maybe, you know, and this is, by the way, for the warrant, for the annual town meeting.
Correct, yeah.
So, we still have another bite at this apple if we should want to, you know, revisit this. But I think at this point in time, that we need to speak to these folks. I don't want to discourage anyone, or make them think that we're all for a dump in the Town of Lee, which we obviously are not. And we've done so far everything in our power to try and make sure we avoid this. So, I wish they had talked about this to us, or one of us at least, to get wording that might be doable and have some teeth to it at the town meeting. And maybe we can revisit this with this group, either as a group or individually, to come up with something that will work. At this point in time, I think it's just something that won't help at this moment, but maybe we can revisit it in the future, after discussions. So, I'm not sure we should vote to put it on. Maybe we could vote to pass over it for now and revisit it if we need to.
If we wanted to table it, do we need to make a motion to table?
I would think so, yeah, for this, and maybe until after we have some discussions. I don't want to exclude any of the people on here. You know, they all are very well-meaning, and I agree with all of them. But it's the format and the process that's flawed in the language. So, if we can fix the process, or meet with these folks and have them understand the way we're trying to get to the same place they're wanting us to be.
Perhaps the advisory committee could work together on a resolution that would be more suitable.
More appropriate, and any of that, because some of these people are on the advisory committee. And maybe we could, I see two at least, if not more. Maybe at the next advisory committee, we can have this on the agenda. We would still have time to be able to put it on the annual warrant, but perhaps with some different language than this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I was hoping that some or all of these folks would be here tonight to, for clarification, because I'm confused as well.
I am, yeah.
Because this, it does seem, the way it's worded, it does seem redundant, in that going back five years, there were, if I'm not wrong, three attempts to rescind or renegotiate this agreement, and all failed in court.
Right.
The other thing that I'm concerned about is that this gets to a town meeting the way that it's worded, and the voters will see it as redundant and vote no, and the next day in the paper, it says, Lee doesn't want to renegotiate.
Right, yeah, I don't want that to happen.
We don't want that to happen.
Not at all.
And we've been very, very clear multiple times in public that we would like to sit down with GE and the EPA and renegotiate, but they have an agreement.
And they have a permit.
And they have a permit, and they can't be compelled to do it.
Right.
Right today, but there is a lawsuit which may bring that conversation about, so.
I agree. Well, then what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we table this.
Okay.
And until we can have a conversation with those who have signed the petition.
Okay, that's good. All right, do I have a second for that? All right, we have a motion and a second. And I will call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, so this is tabled until we can move it along and see if we can get it done in a slightly different fashion than this, and worded differently. Thank you very much, Bob. All right, and I know how much that must pain you, because I know how much no one here wants a dump. But we need to do it correctly, with the right language. And that's, because this could be problematic also, we, anyway, I won't go down that road, but we can explain it to the group.
Yeah.
Be happy to do that.
The answer is not to yell louder, it's to get smarter.
Right, all right, well put. All right, so, our last regular order of general business is some appointments to the Agricultural Commission. We have Brian and Carolyn Hogan Camp, who have requested to be appointed to the Agricultural Commission. So, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we appoint Brian and Carolyn Hogan Camp to the Ag Commission. And I would say further that they live and operate on a farm. It would be an asset to that committee.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions for anyone? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, very good. Any topic that the chair could not foresee, reasonably anticipate? No, it seems like we, I would like to say, I wish people were a little more timely on getting to our office with their requests, because once we post our agenda, it always seems uncomfortable, although it's perfectly legal, to amend it once it's posted. But it would be great if people could get stuff maybe by the Wednesday before our meeting, because we need to have it posted by Friday, or maybe even Thursday. When it comes in late in the day Friday, and we're already posted, it just is a little problematic-wise, and let's, so, if people could be a little more timely, that would be wonderful. And that's all. And you folks have anything you want to bring up that we couldn't anticipate?
Fully agree with you.
Okay, all right, then guess what? We're at the point where, Chris, it's all yours.
So, two quick things, one, just a reminder that our special town meeting is gonna be this Thursday.
Yes.
Seven o'clock at the Lee Middle High School auditorium.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yep.
What'd you say?
No, no, I was just making sure I heard him right, because I thought it was, I thought it was at six, because they're usually, they usually start at six, anyway.
I think they always start at seven. We could have one that started at six.
Then I'm misremembering it, so.
If you come at six, bring coffee, bring coffee and be prepared to sit, so it's okay.
That was our five-minute meeting, started at six.
Yeah, there you go.
It was the only time we were, yeah, but.
Okay, so seven o'clock Thursday.
And on the website, we have a number of things posted, if anyone's interested. The warrant is obviously there, the summary of all of the non-zoning articles, and then there's a separate summary from the planning board of all the zoning articles. There's maps of the three properties that are gonna be discussed, two to be purchased, one to be leased. And there is also a, actually, a copy of the LIA lease there as well. So, all of those documents are available on the website. We'll have paper copies of most of those at the town meeting. I don't believe we did the full lease, because it was like thirty pages long, but there are QR codes, you're gonna get it on your phone, if you don't have a chance to look at it ahead of time, so.
Great, thank you.
The second thing was just to mention that we have, as of this past weekend, closed off parking at the Iraldi Building. There will be work starting there in a few days. The fence along Railroad Street will be going up shortly, and abatement on those buildings will be happening soon as well, so. If there's cars there, today, we weren't doing anything, but they are expected to start in the next couple of days, and we will have to have any cars still there moved, so.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right.
And there is parking, of course, if we need it available. Certain parts of Railroad Street, the parking along Frankie Consolati Way, directly across from the post office, is still open. There is parking behind 57 Main here at Town Hall, as well as the lot behind Town Hall, and library, and then we are relaxing any of the overnight rules for Main Street as well, so.
Okay, very good. I know we shouldn't have any super-duper snowstorms, let's hope, cross our fingers, so we don't have to worry about the on-street parking, so that would be good. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so our next regular meeting of the select board will be on April 1st. I know it's a silly thing, but it is April Fool's Day, but we're gonna be here anyway. All right, 2025, so, maybe because, anyway, that's a different issue.
Just kidding.
Yeah, just kidding, just kidding, we're not really gonna be here. We're gonna be here April 1st, Tuesday, for our next meeting, and we wish you all well. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.